Good evening. It is Monday, September 9th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Thank you for joining us tonight. We welcome you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight we have actually an exciting first agenda item. We have a new Board of Ed member who is joining the board tonight, Ralph Brooks. I'm going to turn to my colleague Kristin Peck to say a few words, and then we're going to ask Mr. Bill Blosz to come up and administer the oath of office. First, however, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin.
Thank you. We are thrilled to be welcoming Ralph Brooks to the Board of Education. We voted at our last meeting unanimously to welcome him and to endorse him as our replacement for a board member who had to step down for medical reasons. And I just wanted to remind the public of the process that we have to go through. So typically, we try to replace from within the same political party as the vacating spot. We're obligated by town charter to do so, if possible. And we were, so that's great news. And Ralph joins us with lots of experience from around the world and from Yale and here in the New Haven County. He's got two kids in the district, and we are thrilled to have him join us. Shall we have Bill come up?
Yes. So I'd like to invite Bill Blosz up to the podium, please. For those of you who are somehow unaware, Bill Blosz is not only a very prominent attorney, he was on the Board of Education for 20 years. I got to serve with Bill for eight. He served this community as Chair of the Board for 14 of those years and has continued to serve as a mentor to me, but had an incredible, incredible positive influence on the Board of Ed and on Guilford Public Schools. So thank you for coming to do this, and welcome back for a moment.
My pleasure. My pleasure. I would call Mr. Brooks, please, to join me. And Mr. Brooks, if you'd just come over here, and do you have family that you'd like to join?
I do.
Okay. Maybe you could introduce them as they approach.
Oh, okay.
When they get here.
This is my son Ashwin, and my son Ravi, and my wife Sheila. And we're all very happy to be here.
All right. Well, then, Mr. Brooks, it is my privilege as a Commissioner of the Superior Court of the State of Connecticut to administer your oath as a member of the Guilford Board of Education. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, the duties of the Office of Board of Education member to the best of your abilities, so help you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
I'm looking forward to hearing about Mr. Brooks's work on the board and obviously watching you all with great care and doing the great work that you're doing. The district has never been in better shape, and you are all to be congratulated and thanked.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Ralph, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thrilled to have you and wonderful to have your family join you during that moment. Excellent. All right. We are now going to move to item number four, action on the minutes of the August 12, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
A motion.
Second. Any comments or corrections?
No.
I'm going to ask, it makes itself clear a little later on, but I am just for the most clarity going to ask for an addition at the bottom of page six. The very, the very bottom, under 9.8, the second sentence. They have negotiated a three-year contract that, and I'm going to ask for the addition of, for the 2024-25 school year, provides for a 2.5% salary increase, the addition of, et cetera, only because when we vote on a superintendent contract, the compensation is for just that first year.
Not the three years.
Right. So I just would like the, for the 24-25 school year inserted between that and provides. Any other comments, corrections? All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstentions?
Two.
Two abstentions, actually. So Mr. Schrader and Mr. Brooks abstain. All right. Item number five, an opportunity for a member of the public to comment on any topics on the agenda. Does anyone have a topic, comment for the topic on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Baldwin for review and approval of expenditures of finances for the month of August.
Thank you very much. Although very busy because it is beginning of the year and lots of things are paid upfront and not for the rest of the year, other than that, it's pretty boring. So that might be good. So the expenditures for that month were $5,318,285.96. The expenditures and accumbrances through the end of August were 15.5% of the budget as compared to 13.99% in 23-24. There's a, the reason for a little bit of an increase here is just due to the timing of expenses. This year, we had more expenses that were due in August rather than September. For example, salaries, employee benefits, and tuition were all higher than last year, again because of the payments. Purchase services is lower, and supplies and materials are in line with prior year. Capital is, as of right now, it's lower than the prior year, and transportation is in line with it. The warrants being submitted for payment for this month were $3,44,622.23.
All right. We did discuss the finance report in the Operations Committee meeting just prior to this in some detail, as well as the warrants, but I will give my colleagues an opportunity for any additional comments or questions if they have them. All right. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the August 2024 financial reports for fiscal year 2024-25. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. That's everybody. We're up to number seven, communications. Do any of my colleagues have any communications to share? It's been a little quiet, I think.
Yeah, very.
That's likely to change in a little bit, as we have just kicked off the school year. Student reps is agenda number, item number eight, but we will not have a report. Usually, we don't until October.
October, meaning October.
When our reps will be joining us. So we are all ready up to number nine, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Freeman.
Thank you very much. And if I may, before I begin my formal report this evening, I want to take a minute to introduce board members to Dr. Kari Fletcher, who is joining us and is in the audience this evening. Dr. Fletcher is the Curriculum Director in the Old Saybrook School District and is joining us this year. He's joining the Guilford team as an administrative intern as he is working on his superintendent certification through the University of Connecticut. He has been joining us as a team. He joined us for our three days of administrator retreat already this summer, and I know that you'll see Kari in meetings. I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce him to all of you tonight. We have a second intern who is also going to be joining us this year through a different university, and Adam was not able to join us tonight, but I'll make Adam Swinney's introduction to you when he's here one evening as well. So be joining me and be joining other members of the leadership team in meetings throughout the school year. You'll see them both around quite a bit, and we're happy that you're here. Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome.
With that, I'll jump in and formally let everybody know that we have open schools.
In case those of you with children had not noticed.
On September 29th, the full staff and faculty, sorry, August 28th, the full staff and faculty return for convocation. It was exciting this year in that we, for the first time in anyone's memory, brought all faculty and staff together for one convocation event this year. So at the high school just downstairs in the Performing Arts Center, we had all of our certified staff as well as all of our faculty join us, sorry, all of our staff join us for the kickoff to the year. We welcomed new members to the team. We celebrated years of service for other members. We thanked community partnerships with GFPE and with the Guilford Free Library, and we engaged in an activity that focused on belonging. As we continue this school year, we're going to continue to focus on both academic as well as social and emotional belonging in our schools and in our classrooms. Last year, you got to meet Dr. Levinson from Harvard, and she introduced you to the case study model. We worked with what Harvard is now referring to as the micro dilemma model, where we broke all of our 600 employees up into small groups of six or eight, gave them a dilemma that is ripped from the headlines, is something that could happen in any one of our schools and any one of our classrooms on a given day, and asked, what should the teacher do in this situation? And across 75 different collaborative groups wrestling with eight different scenarios, we looked at how we make sure that in unexpected situations, we find the learning opportunity and we make sure that all of our students know that they belong in our classrooms. And then, on the heels of that event with the help of an AI tool, we took all the responses from those 75 groups in their eight different scenarios, fed that into a tool that collated and summarized and synthesized all of those results, so that by the end of that same afternoon, our staff was able to open up that document. And if we wrestled with one dilemma, we got to see what the other seven challenges were. And if we were curious what ideas others had for the one that we wrestled with, we got to see what colleagues across the district had as possible ways to support our students as we navigate challenging times and turn challenges into learning opportunities. It's a really exciting opportunity. That was followed by two other full days of professional development at the building level. You know that Melissa Jones welcomed a new principal this year, and it was a fantastic kickoff to the year. Students arrived. Students arrived on September 3rd, and I need to say that it was one of the calmest, smoothest opening days, opening weeks that we have seen in some time.
Everybody's looking for wood.
Yes, I know. I'm going to go ahead and just celebrate it. It was wonderful. We had all of our certified teaching positions full before the first day that students arrived. We had people in place. We had buildings that were ready to go. There were no buildings that didn't have windows or front walks or HVAC systems as we were rushing to finish summer projects. Students arrived, they were welcomed, they were greeted. I know you're anxious to know how the buses ran on our first days of school, and we owe Specialty Transportation just a huge thank you. Buses ran incredibly smoothly this year. Students arrived to school on time, and in the first five days of school, buses have cleared the roads. One day at 4:50, two days at 4:38 this afternoon, they cleared the roads at 4:36. We've had a really successful logistical opening to school. And with all those fears about the logistical opening, now we get down to the real business. And now teachers are into coursework, they're into learning, they're taking what we've learned over the past years and across the summer and really integrating it into their classrooms. So I am just happy to report that it was a really exciting, really successful, and a very bump-free opening to school this year, and we're very much excited about it.
That's terrific. Comments, questions?
I'll just say that Baldwin was so easy this year. Like, I don't know what's going on over there, Mr. Hamel, but it's so easy to like drop off and pick up kids now.
We love hearing that. Thank you.
It was great.
I think it's really important to note that this opening this year includes the addition of three full-time SROs. And as we're thanking the bus company, I want to make sure that we're thanking the town and specifically Guilford PD. We have increased from one full-time SRO to three full-time school resource officers this year. Community will see more of those uniformed officers in the school. We were really excited about the budget work, but I can't give enough credit to the chief and to the department for filling those positions and having folks. So these new additions to our team were here over the summer in this room with the leadership team as we planned for school incidences. We looked at our emergency planning, and they collaborated on that training with us. They were there with us at convocation, participating in those breakout groups with other teachers and custodians and dining service workers and clerical positions. They're a part of the team this year, and we couldn't be more grateful to have them on board. And we processed and hired 27 new certified positions this year. As I mentioned, all certified positions are currently filled and were filled before the first student day. Last year, you know that we struggled with that, and this year, we were able to fill all those positions. I will note that we still have substitute and permanent substitute and paraprofessional and some other positions that are currently still to be filled, but we are in a good position. And as we've done the last few years, want to take a small opportunity to allow those new certified employees, this is just the certified staff that we're sharing with you tonight, but we want to give them the opportunity to introduce themselves to all of you. So I will note the audio is a little loud in some and a little softer on others. We've got it worked out about as well as we can.
Great.
All right. And thanks to Lori Hahn, who puts this together every year. And of course.
We don't expect you to be an AV professional.
It went to sleep just as it was time, or is that Kevin? Is Kevin pushing buttons? Kevin, we're losing, there we go.
I'm Will Carson Mathis. I'll be teaching first grade at AW Cox Elementary this year. My family of six moved to Connecticut two years ago after living in six other states. We're happy to make Guilford our home. My youngest three children will be attending Guilford High School, Adams', and Baldwin Middle Schools this year.
My name's Tasugiyama, and I'm from Hawaii. I'm going to be a special education teacher at the Calvin Lake School, and right now I'm in Florida, so I'm not at home, but I live with two cats. This one's Colby, and that's Cici.
Hi, I'm Carrie Albers, and I'm the new special education preschool teacher at Guilford Lakes.
Hello, I'm Kristin Valsmo, and I'm so grateful and beyond excited to be joining the Guilford Lakes team as the new math coach. I live here in Guilford with my husband and two children, and we are looking forward to a fantastic school year.
Hi, I'm Becca Corcoran, and this is Otis, and I am one of the new special ed teachers at Guilford Lakes Elementary. I started back in March, but this will be my first fall, and I'm excited to get going. I will be working with our kindergartners, our first graders, and some of our fourth graders.
Hi, I'm Katie. I'm just, I'll be the new K4 school psychologist at Lakes. I have Annie and Josie with us, and we want to say good luck to a great year. And what else do we have to say, Jo?
Freedom, white, freedom, white, freedom, white, women's, and, oh.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. My name is Deirdre Holland, and I am the new school psychologist over at Lakes Elementary School, working with the preschool students. I'm really excited to start working with Guilford Public Schools, and I'm wishing everybody a great start to their school year.
My name is Teresa Crusie, and I will be the new school social worker at Guilford Lakes.
Hi, I'm Mercy McDermott, and I am the new Guilford Lakes resource teacher. I have 11 years of teaching experience, and I currently live in West Haven with my husband, Brian, our one-year-old daughter, Charlotte, and our Black Lab, Ella.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madison Pakowski, and I am so excited to be teaching third grade at Guilford Lakes Elementary.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jordan Emparati, and I'm so excited to be a part of the Guilford Schools' family. I'm going out my 14th year as a special education teacher, and I can't wait to start my first day at Melissa Jones School.
Me too.
Me too.
Bye.
Bye.
Hi, everyone. My name is Connor Melo. I'll be the new physical education teacher at Melissa Jones. Looking forward to meeting you all.
Hey, everyone. I'm Joe Ballowitz, the new principal at Melissa Jones School. I've got all my B swag, I've got a shirt, I've got my B lunchbox, I've got my B umbrella, even my B bucket hat. I'm ready to go.
Hi, my name is Christine Wolfing. I'm the new fifth-grade school counselor at Baldwin Middle School. I am very excited to be back in Guilford, and I can't wait to work with all of you again.
My name is Carlos Dodder, and I'll be teaching orchestra at Baldwin Middle School. When I'm not teaching, or especially in the summer, I like to be in New Hampshire baking 4,000 peters.
Hi, my name is Kelly Bush. I will be teaching eighth-grade math this year at Adams Middle School.
Hey, everybody. I'm Stevie Uhas, and I'm the new string teacher at Adams. I've been teaching for 16 years, and if you want to get to know me in about three things, I'm pretty serious about cars, classical music, and coffee, not necessarily in that order. I'm really excited to be starting in Guilford. See you soon.
Hi, everyone. My name is Adam Melo. My wife, Marie, and I live in North Branford with our 11-year-old, Bodie Anderson, and our six-year-old daughter, Lucia. I've started my 22nd year as a special ed teacher. I started my career at Bridgeport, and I'm joining you from Branford. I've worked at every level from first grade all the way to 21-year-olds. I'm very happy to be joining the Adams Middle School team, and I look forward to meeting you all.
Hi, my name is Bang Madiu, and I'm the school counselor at Adams Middle School.
Hey, everyone. My name is John Sterns, newly created science teacher at Adams Middle School. I used to be a marine biologist and arborist, and now I'm really excited to join the education field. This is my favorite spot to hang out. This is my wisteria pergola on the patio that me and my friends hang out at. My grass looks terrible right now and full of weeds, but I'm very excited to join the team. See y'all.
Hi, my name is Olivia Strelvitz. I'm going to be starting at Adams Middle School as a seventh-grade language arts teacher. This is going to be my second year of teaching, and this is my dog, Honey.
Hi, my name is Lauren Blondi Olivo, and I will be an English teacher/mastery-based diploma assessment teacher this year at Guilford High School. I can't wait to get started. This is going to be my first official year as a teacher, and I couldn't imagine any better things to start off my career. And my favorite author is Jane Austen.
Hi, I'm Clara B. teaching science at Guilford High School.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mike McGrady. I'm going to be joining the tech ed team at Guilford High School. I look forward to meeting and hopefully working with as many of you as I can, and hope you have a great start to your school year.
Good morning. My name is Samantha Fasselli. I'll be joining Guilford High School Special Ed Department, co-teaching math. This is my 17-year of teaching, so I do come with a little bit of experience. I live in North Branford with my husband, Viddy, and my student, a new freshman this year, going to Xavier, my son, Luca. And I just look forward to joining everyone and working together.
Hi, I'm Kim Ragnar. I've been hired as a special ed teacher at Guilford High School. This is my 28th year of teaching. My husband, Doug, our son, Jackson, and our pup, Portia, live a mile away from Guilford for about 20 years. We're bound to be empty nesters as Jackson makes his way up to UVM, and I'm looking forward to a great year.
So again, enormous thanks to Mr. Bowden and to the HR office and to the principals who did the bulk of all of that hiring this summer. We're really excited about the class of new teachers that we're bringing in this year.
Terrific.
The last piece that I have is to give you your second informal update on enrollment.
Right.
The formal update will be at this meeting next month. October 1 is the formal enrollment day. Couple things on this that I want to bring to your attention. So we enrolled the kindergarten class of 180 students this year. That is a little bit smaller than we were anticipating. We were expecting to enroll closer to the 200 that we enrolled last year, so it's a little bit lower than we anticipated enrolling in K this year. I'll make a note that we held back in one section. So while the budget afforded 12 sections of K this year, we have only filled three. And so rather than coming to you in this meeting and telling you that we added an unbudgeted teaching position to the budget this year, I'm actually noting that we did not do that, and we held back on filling a position this year that is still in the budget. I'd also like to draw your attention to the bottom right-hand corner. I'm going to talk about averages for a little while, and I know that averages can obscure truths, but I want to point out that K through 4 this year, the average class size in the elementary schools is 17.3. And if you just march to the left a little bit, I'm going to point out that in third and fourth grade, the average class sizes across the district are 18. In first and second grade, the average class sizes are 17, and in kindergarten this year, the average class size is 16. So when you look at averages, those numbers fall exactly where the board recommended class sizes would expect for those to fall. As you look closer, obviously, there are going to be outliers in individual class sections. Remember that we spread at the elementary level students across five grade levels in four locations based on address. So in kindergarten this year, it's a little bit tighter than it was last year. You will see that we've got, again, an average of 16 with a high kindergarten class of 19 this year and a low of 13, but that 13 is surrounded by two 14s at Cox Elementary School, the highs at Lakes of 18 and 19. And again, we're still looking at enrollments that are occurring, so these numbers may change slightly before I give you the formal update on October 1st. But this year, they fall exactly where we would expect them to fall. I would note that kindergarten at Cox, where you see three sections in 13s and 14s, is very likely going to be collapsed into two sections at first or second grade when the expectation of board class sizes changes from kindergarten to first and second grade. I would also note for the board that we're a little bit disappointed, but in our first year of open choice, we have enrolled one student this year with a New Haven address. We had higher numbers in the beginning of the summer, and then we saw families that withdrew from the enrollment here. I think, I believe, that those withdrew because they found placements that were closer to New Haven. Remember that currently Guilford is the furthest geographically from the sending district of New Haven. We're going to continue to work on increasing those numbers for next year. Next year, we will continue the first grader who will move into second grade. We will offer first grade seats again, and we will offer fifth grade seats, all based on space available. And so we're hoping to see those numbers increase next year, as we're excited to be able to invite new students into the Guilford Public Schools.
This is no doubt not the time for this conversation, and we can't change the distance between Guilford and New Haven, but it'd be, I would enjoy a discussion of thinking about how we could make up for that somehow or make it, you know, make it attractive if we see, you know, next year, we also struggle, right? Like, if it changes next year, great, but if we see this as a struggle.
I think that's exactly right.
And I totally appreciate a parental decision to make that, but it would be great if we had other opportunities to make up for that some way.
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to make sure this year that we support the student who is joining us.
Sure.
And make sure that that individual child has a really good experience with us, and we're going to work with ACES. We're going to look at some other districts. You know, New Haven also sends to Cheshire, and so they're not as far out the shoreline, but that's a pretty good community as well.
That's awful, too, right.
And I believe that Madison is working on the same legislative change that we asked to have made, and so we might not be the furthest anymore.
Oh, to join, to join the New Haven.
Yes, to join the New Haven program, and that might afford a possibility for some shared transportation. And so we're absolutely going to look into ways to try to increase that enrollment for next year and share those with you. Probably a really good topic for a workshop conversation, even this year, rather than just waiting with crossed fingers. We'd be happy to talk to you about ways we're going to try to improve that enrollment number this year as well.
Dr. Freeman, will we open second grade seats next year since we did not fill all of the first grade options?
Yes, so we will offer, right, we had offered, I believe we offered nine seats. It was six or nine seats that we offered.
Six.
And so it's very likely that we might be able to open four to five seats again in second grade, as well as the first grade seats, as well as beginning at fifth grade at Baldwin. Yeah, exactly right. Thank you for clarifying that. I kind of muddied that, I think.
And then, any comments or questions about the enrollment numbers? I don't know if I'm misremembering. It looks like the Cox kindergarten has done exactly what we thought, right? That, I feel like it was one fewer last month or something. Anyway, the idea is that Anyway, the idea is that we would never have combined them because they were going to then surpass the Board of Ed guidance. And indeed, it would be 21 and 20, which would surpass that kindergarten 20 upper.
That's exactly right.
Okay. So what we're seeing, just for the public as we look at these, is that none of, while there is, as Dr. Freeman has already pointed out, variation across schools and that's a variation that we cannot prevent. None of the class sizes in any of the schools in any of the grades surpass any of our guidelines. They are all well within our classroom size guidelines.
That's exactly right. And in fact, the only place that you fall outside the guidelines at all is in those kindergarten classes at Cox where we're actually falling one or two students below.
Below, right.
But again, to reduce from three to two would then push it above where we would like to be. You know, and the only other thing that I would note, again, I noted that the average class size in Guilford elementary schools, K through four, is 17.3. The single largest classroom in all of Guilford's elementary schools currently sits at 23 today. And those are really positive numbers. Those are numbers that many school districts across the state would covet, would love to be able to have. And so most of those classes, most of those class sections that you look at fall into the teens. There are very few 20s, 21s, and exactly one class that reaches the level of 23 and that is a fourth grade class. And again, it still falls within those guidelines. And so we're always, again, trying to balance, you know, the efficiency of the organization that we run with really positive class sizes for students. And I believe that this year, the numbers that we're seeing in front of us really, really do both of those things.
Wonderful.
And I would say that that's going to conclude my report for tonight unless there's.
All right. Any other comments? No.
No, wonderful.
We are up to the board agenda. I do want to make a quick mention, which I should have made at the beginning of the meeting. Our colleague Moira Rader was unable to join us tonight because of illness. And she was really excited to be here. She certainly wanted to welcome our newest member, but she is joining us via livestream. So I believe I may be talking directly to her as I talk to the rest of you. Okay, board agenda 10.1 is to act on personnel items. We are being asked to ratify the appointment of the following teachers and I believe we just saw all of them introduce themselves.
Yeah, I believe you've already met them.
That's right. Lauren Blondi Olivo, oh, sorry, Olivo, GHS, English and the Master, right? The MDA program, mastery-based diploma. Jordan Imperati at Jones Special Education. Michael McGrady, GHS Tech. And Madison Potowski, Lakes Third Grade. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of these four teachers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or abstained? Nope, that's unanimous, wonderful. Item 10.2, we're being asked to approve a donation of $9,134.74 from the Guilford Lakes PTO for the creation of an outdoor theater. I'm just making sure I read the letter and see if I didn't miss anything. Nope, we've gotten exactly that. The Lakes PTO is purchasing, purchased a building supplies and Scott Melibert donated his time to construct the theater. So is there a motion to approve this donation from the Guilford Lakes School PTO? So moved. Second? All in favor? Aye. Aye. And a big thank you to the Guilford Lakes PTO for their donation here and for their support. This sounds terrific.
It really is beautiful. It looks like it's going to be a lot of fun.
That's wonderful. We are really, really quite lucky in the school district to have the contributions of the PTOs, the booster clubs, just really a very large, large group of parents supporting the schools in a number of ways. Number 10.3 is to receive for possible action priorities and initiatives. So this is an exhibit. This is something we typically do every year. We receive, and Dr. Freeman, you're going to help me out here if I misspeak, receive from the administration a thoughtful approach to looking at the priorities from the prior year, considering whether those are priorities that the administration wants to change or tweak, and also identifying initiatives, particular initiatives for the 24, 25 year.
That is exactly right and I apologize for trying to get that to project properly while you were speaking.
That's okay.
Additionally, this conversation for tonight's presentation began, I believe, at our June meeting where we met at Lakes Elementary School and we, as the board, talked about the priorities and the initiatives that we would like to see this year and in fact reaffirmed three longstanding priorities of the school district. On the heels of that, in August, when the leadership team met in our annual summer retreat at the Mercy Center just next door in Madison, we looked further at that. And so what you will see here tonight follows a format that you are familiar with. The wording is a little bit different and I want to highlight that we're trying to make clearer in this presentation the through line. And so our priorities and initiatives begin with our portrait of the graduate. The portrait of the graduate points to those skills, those competencies that cut across grade level and subject area. The portrait of the graduate, very intentionally and specifically, doesn't talk about specific learning in areas like English Language Arts or mathematics or science or history because it talks to the skills that we want our students to develop that cut across any specific content or subject area. All of those expectations that are specific to content and subject area exist. They exist in our curricula that this board approves through a regular calendar of updating those curricula. Beneath the portrait of the graduate first sits a set of priorities. And the three priorities that we call out speak to the three nested environments that we look to create in the Guilford Public Schools. And those three priorities, those three nested environments haven't changed, although we did rewrite the language this year. We've focused on these three priorities for the last 10 to 12 years and we've reorganized them and we've wordsmithed them. And what we recognize this year is that we've also larded on some jargon over the last 10 years. So thanks to Dr. Goss and the leadership team, but we went back and we looked at these three priorities this year and held on to the meeting, but updated and simplified them to focus on the current work and the current way that we identify and speak about these priorities, the current vocabulary that we're using in and around the schools. So the first one simply says, "Our schools would be physically and emotionally safe places for learning, built on foundations of belonging and collaborative decision-making." First, we need to know that our kids feel safe when they walk into these schools, physically safe, and we were reminded of that again just last week. And we will continue to work on and talk about security in our schools. But equally, they need to feel emotionally safe when they walk into the buildings. And we talk with students about creating classrooms that are safe and brave places, brave as we take learning risks and safe because we are supported by our teachers and our peers and the adults who surround us in those schools. And again, we've teased some jargon out of that, but it says what we believe is important and that is the fountainhead of everything we do in the school system. If we don't provide that safe learning environment, students aren't going to be available to learn in the ways that we want them to learn. Next is that we focus on creating a professional environment. And that is to say that educators will pursue high-quality instruction through interactive cycles of improvement in collaboration with school leaders, colleagues, and other experts. You saw some of this reflected in the new teacher support and growth plan that we shared with you very recently. We have some of the best-trained teachers in the state in Guilford Public Schools. We hire really competitively. You noticed on the personnel, some of the years of experience that were on that personnel item that you just approved. And once we hire, we also train really thoughtfully. New teacher orientation, convocation, and learning cycles with coaches as well as the interactions with the building leaders. Our principals are not managers, they are instructional leaders in our schools. We need to create the professional environment to support and train and put the best teachers that we can in front of our students every day. And once we create that safe environment and once we provide that professional environment for the teachers in this system, then and only then can we focus on the learner environment that we create, which is to say, learner thinking will be centered through the use of research-proven instructional practices and resources and measured by the ongoing collection of evidence of learning. Again, you had a little taste of that this year at Adams when you went into a math classroom and experienced the thinking classroom model that we've been working on. Student learning is the focus of what we do. And so these three priorities begin with the safe environment, move to the professional focus, and then talk about the rigorous classroom setting that we strive to create. And again, while those may be worded a little bit differently than you remember from past years, they still focus on that core, the core priorities of the system. Every year then, we identify specific to-dos. If those are the priorities that will take us to the portrait of the graduate, what are the specific jobs that need to get done between now and June 30th? And that is brought to you in the form of initiatives. And I hope that you will recognize items on this list, both from our conversation in June and from work that we've shared with you spread across the course of the school year. Never before have we brought you only two initiatives, but the first one's got about six bullets underneath it. So the first initiative this year is to improve learning in alignment with Guilford's model of high-quality instruction. It's what we're here for. Every year, we are focused on improving learning. We presented it this year because those five bullets really fit underneath that broad umbrella. But specifically, we need to review a special education programming for students with more significant special needs and this is really specific, really targeted towards our pre-K through eight. I think it was just at your last meeting that we shared with you the report. There's a lot to be shared in that report, there's a lot to unpack and we need to make sure that we spend time this year bringing it to the constituent groups of the teachers and the paraprofessionals and most importantly, the parents of the students who are receiving those supports. And we need to unpack both the commendations and the recommendations from within that report and turn that into a plan and a strategy moving forward. That's going to be a big piece of the work that we do this year. Much of that work will fall to Mr. Scanziano's office. Additionally, we are going to continue to explore restorative practices to support for student belonging. We're looking at the ways that we talk about and do discipline in the school system and moving away from a punitive structure to a more restorative structure. State of Connecticut requires us to be moving in that direction. It is a direction that we've been moving for a number of years. Dr. Harrison has been doing a lot of work with the leadership team and the principals have then been bringing that to the buildings. We need to continue focusing on that work as well. This helps students to be available for learning. As with everything else, if we do this well, students have more time in class where they are not distracted, but they are focused on that learning that is the center of everything that we do.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yep.
Have you ever thought about bringing that idea to like the PTOs or to the public a little bit more?
Yes, and we haven't. We need to socialize that more out in the public. So that's something that we've been talking about internally, but we need to make that a bigger part of the conversation with the parents, yes.
Great.
Some folks are looking for black and white. If you do A, this is what happens to you. And I know that there are some parents who really appreciate that sort of response. Other parents are really sort of aghast if that's the way that we're doing it and we do need to have that conversation publicly, absolutely.
I wonder if that would also be a good topic for a workshop meeting.
I believe it's already on our draft agenda for this. I think there's, there might be a piece in your folder tonight that lists the proposed and I believe we've got Dr. Harrison coming. And so that's part of it, is having the conversation in public with the board, but that's not the only way we get the information to parents. We know a lot of parents aren't necessarily home watching this with popcorn tonight.
Really? So disappointing.
But yes, absolutely, and we're excited to have Riddell join us for that conversation.
And I would also suggest that you bring, especially Officer Jengress, because with the juvenile review board and the options that they do a lot more of the restorative practice, even with the police department, he could speak volumes about that. That would just be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's a really good idea because it does dovetail nicely with the way that the community is responding to young residents as well, right? And the kids who come to our schools, the students in our school, in our buildings every day are also just young people who live in Guilford and so there's other groups that support them as well. We are going to spend time this year looking at our curriculum revision calendar and looking at, again, right? We've got 13 different curricula in the school system and every one of them is on a calendar to be refreshed and renewed and brought to you for approval. We want to look at that calendar, we want to update that process and we want to talk about where we are in that process. The pandemic threw a wrench into that calendar and we quite honestly haven't gotten back to that and so that's work that will be coming primarily out of Dr. Goss's office. But remember, while ambidy heads up that work, the curricula in Guilford are written by the teachers in Guilford. They are, they are, we don't buy curricula off the shelves. We may purchase materials that support our curricula, but they are written by the educational professionals and it all ties back to the way that we hire and the way that we create the environment to support those professionals. But we lean on teachers to actually write those curricula. We need to spend time this year implementing and taking early responses for possible revisions to that teacher support and growth plan that we shared with you. So we know that it's been approved by the state. We know that in fact the state wants to use it as an exemplar. We've got some final revisions that we need you to approve tonight, but those are all just window dressing. It was good from the start. But we need to now thoughtfully spend time supporting the principals who are rolling that out to their teachers, who are then supporting their teachers in the building. We don't just want to roll it out and implement it well. We want to do it with our eyes wide open so that we're taking feedback and we're noticing what works and we're refining and revising it along the way. So again, the plan is done. All the work actually starts as principals are rolling it out these weeks to the teachers who are just returning to them. And really interestingly, part of the retreat, part of our summer retreat with the leadership team, we brought in a really interesting guest. Matt Mervis has been a leader in Connecticut around tech and AI for some time now and I don't know how we missed him. I don't know how we hadn't worked with him in the past, but he joined us this summer. We had a really exciting opportunity. We're going to continue working with Matt, but we also know that like a couple of the other topics we've just touched base on, this is one that needs to be done publicly and this is one where we need to include, we need to have really important conversations about both AI and tech in the schools. We know that there are growing and legitimate concerns about the emotional and medical impact that devices and social media particularly are having on students. I'd say adults as well, but we know that it's important for students. We also know that AI is an incredibly exciting tool that is also disrupting the educational field. And so we plan on this year launching an AI and technology steering committee. For those of you who have been on the board for some time, I think the best analogies I could make would be to the homework committee or to the start time committee. We're going to want to get a really representative group of people together. I want to, it will be educator-heavy, but we also need parents to be part of that conversation, community members, we've got a lot of expertise in this community that we can tap, and importantly, students. We cannot have this conversation about the students and plan to do things to the students in these areas without inviting those voices to the table. So we're really excited about that component this year. I want to specifically note that in our conversation in June, we had also talked about communication with and including the community. And so while it's not teased out there, I hope that you see in those bullets the communication that's been embedded into those bullets, that we want to work with the community and partner on the special education rollout and redesign. We want to work with the teachers as we roll out the new plan. We want to work with the community around topics of both AI and devices. There's a lot of communication baked into all of those. And then, and we didn't mention it at the ops meeting this evening, but we also want to, we want to engage in a new and updated district-wide facility study. We did one about 12 years ago. It became a really helpful roadmap for us. It has helped us to bring really important improvements to the buildings and it's time to renew that. We're beyond the, we're beyond the closed date of that. We want to look really thoughtfully about how we continue to invest monies in our schools. I know we still call this the new high school, but it's not that new. this the new high school, but it's not that new anymore. It's a decade old now. And Adams, Adams, I believe, is having its 90th birthday. Adams is soon to be 100 years old. We really need to look at the ways that we continue to invest in our physical plants, how we make sure that the schools remain physically the environments that we want to create for the students and the teachers who fill them every day. And that means sometimes bringing in experts and asking them hard questions. I will note that with a lot of these initiatives this year, a lot of the work tends to fall around the periphery of the classroom, and that's done really intentionally. We have asked a lot of our teachers in the last several years. At the elementary level, we've brought in new reading materials and new mandates from the state about how we teach and assess reading. We've brought in new math materials. We've focused on belonging in the classroom. These are really intentionally built in a way to continue to support learning that the teachers are already engaging in, rather than adding a lot of new initiatives for the teachers this year. So I mentioned that a lot of this work sits in the special ed office, or sits in the curriculum office, or sits in the facilities office. It's all about teaching and learning, but we tried where we could to honor the work the teachers have been doing, to respect that learning takes some time. You can't learn everything in one year and then start a bunch of new initiatives every September. So I just want to name that, that that was done really intentionally. And I hope that you can see the focus of learning while you're also seeing that respect for the classroom teacher. So, that's a lot. And it's, we've been working on this document since June, and we just, I'd be happy to sit here tonight and say it's great and ask for your approval, but I also recognize that some years you take this and ruminate on it, and we come back in October. So we're happy to answer questions. We're happy to take, principals always want to have it so they can make a slide and put it up in front of their teachers the way that we do. But I also know that oftentimes, the board needs time to think about this, and we can certainly act on it in your October meeting. I will note that we have shared it with a lot of teachers in different settings as a draft, and we've made that very clear anytime that we've shared it.
I know there are a couple of us taking notes here, so I'm wondering if we, you know, it'd be great, I think, to have the ability to kind of look over it and spend some time.
Ask questions.
Ask questions. There may be questions now, and certainly want to take the opportunity to do that. If not, if people like to spend a little more time on it, then we can do that. And I would like to throw out the possibility that if I hear from any colleagues that this might be more than like, oh, I have a question, or engender some conversation, I wonder if we take a tiny chunk of the workshop meeting, if that's the sense I get from folks, so we can kind of.
Keep things moving. I think that makes a ton of sense, yeah.
But I'm just throwing that out as a possibility. Any questions now that folks have, or?
I just think it's very forward-thinking. I think, you know, we see this, we see this every year about our priorities, and I think, you know, this is probably the best set of initiatives to go with those priorities that I've seen in a long time. I think it really speaks to what we've been talking about, you know, really for the last, you know, couple of years. You know, there's some points in here that have, you know, the community's been involved in, we've been involved in. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be nice to see these put into action over the next, over the next year.
We appreciate that. Thank you. We only have one item for the workshop so far, so I think adding this as a second agenda item is a great idea.
And I don't want to cut, you know.
No, I think that's a great idea.
Cut into your time if, okay.
That gives you time to look at it again and digest it when I'm not talking at you.
Some questions, okay. Any other questions now? Not seeing, all right. So we will then act on that at our October meeting, and I really encourage anyone to reach out to me if it sounds like taking a tiny bit of time in the workshop meeting makes sense, or whether you have straightforward questions. 10.4, act on acceptance of registrations for one kindergarten student under the age of five requesting enrollment in the 25, a 24, 25 year. So we have done this a number of times over the last couple of months in varying, the requests have varied in the number of students. So again, effective July 1, 2023, Public Act Number 23208 amended the age of entrance for kindergarten students, but it does account for, sorry, I should read the next part if I can read the first. Students must have turned five years of age by September 1 of the registration year in order to enroll in school. Parents, guardians may request admission of their child born between September 2 and December 31. The respective building principal designated certified staff would assess the child to ensure that admitting such child is developmentally appropriate. We've had this happen again a number of times over the summer, so we are being asked for the admission of one additional student for Cox, who has gone through this process and be, has been assessed to be ready to enter kindergarten. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this additional student.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or abstained? All right, that's everyone.
Thank you.
And I imagine that that whole process is now done, seeing that September, but who knows?
Unless we have a late enrollment, or we have a student who relocates during the school year, so it's all new.
Oh, which makes sense.
So, yes, but I would assume that if you see any more students, it would be individual students like this one.
Perfect. All right, and 10.5 is to act on the revised educator evaluation plan. This is a plan that came to us last month for consideration. We all received the plan in our packets, and like so many things that come to the board, we have a month to review it, peruse it, and come with questions. This is, we've heard an educator evaluation plan that was well-received at the state level, and in fact, if I'm correct, they've asked the ability to use it as an example.
Yes.
To others, so.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask to, you know, just elaborate on that. Anything you could say now that you know of how it's being used?
So it's currently on the website listed with other approved documents, and our understanding is that at this time, they are sharing it with other districts who, when they want to make suggestions for how other districts might improve their plans, my understanding is that they're sharing ours with them as a way to move in a, in a direction that they're more supportive of.
Well done.
We continue to be really, really pleased with it and happy about it. It, I will suggest that in 2012, when the state adopted new requirements around teacher supervision and evaluation, they weren't moving in the right direction. They weren't focused on learning. They weren't focused on adult or professional learning. They were focused more on compliance. And when we wrote the plan in 2012, we went up to the state, we shared our feedback, we told them what we were struggling with, and we wrote a plan that allowed us to support the, our teachers in the ways that we thought we should be supporting and evaluating them, and mitigated what I felt was the harm that the expectations did in 2012. From 2012 to now, I'm pleased to report that the state has moved in the direction of Guilford. They have new requirements this year that align much more with our beliefs about learning, about adult learning, and about professional learning. And so we were able to take the parts that we were trying to shoehorn into the old plan and build the plan around those parts this time. And just as we talked earlier about, we're focused on student learning in the classroom, and most of our learning experiences in the classroom are collaborative and cooperative, because human beings learn better in social settings than they do individually in an isolated settings. The teacher plan very much moves in the same direction, and so teachers have opportunities to collaborate with their peers, and Guilford has been built on a professional learning community model for years, but now that same model is reflected in our supervision evaluation plan. Teachers are able to collaborate, they're able to observe and be observed by peers. It strongly relies on the coaching model that we have built, and it focuses on every teacher improving their performance, not being ranked and sorted by whether you're a one, or a two, or a three this year. And so again, I'm appreciative to the state for moving in that direction, really appreciative to everybody who served on the committee with Dr. Goss, and we're really excited to continue to roll this out. It's not going to be perfect. Any new plan is going to have, and so the principals right now are beginning to roll it out and begin implementing with the teachers, and we'll be making revisions along the way, as we do with everything.
Excellent.
Dr. Goss, anything that you want to share before?
They asked us, the state asked us to make a couple of technical edits, which is why we're here again, asking for your approval. I would just want you to understand that the most significant of those edits was, was two sentences that were added on page seven that say, "The growth plan orientation is completed annually prior to continuing the learning process each year. Orientation will include information on, the information on pages seven through 13 of this plan with attention given to the levels of support available to educators." That was the most significant. Most of the changes that they asked us to make were along the lines of, they asked us to put the certification codes of administrators. Every time we put the word supervisor or administrator, we had to also put 092 slash 093. So those were the level of edits that they asked of us, which is why we're not spending a lot of time on it here with you tonight.
Right.
No substantial changes.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions that anyone has before we vote on this tonight? All right, I'm going to ask for a motion then to approve the revised educator evaluation plan developed by our Guilford Public Schools administration faculty.
So moved.
Seconds? I got it, I got one and a second. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that everybody? Excellent, okay. And Mr. Brooks is going to abstain, as this is his first day. Understandable. And hadn't read the plan. Reasonable response. All right, we are up to agenda item 11, reports on committees. Policy Committee, do you have anything to report?
I do not have anything to report, and I just would like to let the public know that we don't have anything to report because we don't do our second meeting in July and August. So we don't have policy or curricular meetings over the summer. So we get to have lots of them over the fall. So policy is meeting in two weeks, and then we have another meeting at the end of November.
Terrific. Operations Committee, anything to add?
We met before this meeting. I think the only thing I'll add is, I think I say this every year, thank you to our facilities team who worked day in, day out over the summer to get a lot of projects completed for our students and teachers as they enter the buildings. So, thank you.
Thank you for noting that. The schools and the grounds this year were in great shape when our kids returned. The place looked great, and thank you for noting that.
Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee.
Our next meeting is October 28.
Excellent. All right. Liaisons to town committees, anything to, no? All right, and 11.5 is liaison to learn Board of Directors. We are now, again, a board of nine. So I'm going to be just reaching out to all of my colleagues about the committees they're on, are people comfortable where they are. If anyone wants to think about a change, we want to, to bring Ralph on to the committees, and then we'll, as part of that communication, think about an approach to the Learn Board of Ed, Learn Board of Directors, so we can engage with them as well. Number 12 is public comments. If, is there anyone here who would like to address the board in public comment? This does not have to be on an agenda item. All right, hearing none. I don't think we have any closing comments tonight. The last thing on our agenda is an executive session for pending litigation. The board's going to be inviting Superintendent Dr. Freeman into that executive session for discussion on pending litigation. When we come out of executive session, we will not be holding any more discussion, nor will we be taking any additional votes. We will simply be adjourning. So I am going to ask for a motion to move into executive session? So moved. The second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you for all who've joined us tonight. Good night.